And that's what champions are made of. That's what individuals who are committed are made of. That's what individuals who are journalists, who want to get the poopy scoop and be nosy, are made of. (laughter) Good evening. Today is Wednesday, July 24th, and this is our regular meeting. We're going to call forth Chief Wagner. And we're going to turn the meeting over to her at this juncture. Please stand for the presentation of the colors by Poughkeepsie High School Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets Hamilton, Partovich, Figueroa, and Fagan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And so while this is a Poughkeepsie City School District Board of Education meeting, we know that this is a very special time as our new superintendent, who was appointed at our July 15th meeting at the City of Poughkeepsie City Hall. And we're ecstatic that, first of all, that an individual of this caliber has not only been selected by the Board of Education, but will be coming to the Poughkeepsie City School District. I would like to thank all of, again, all of the individuals that are here, all of our teachers, all of our support staff, all individuals that are here that counted in our robbery to come out to share on this auspicious occasion with us. We are super excited, and we trust that you are also. At this time, it gives me great privilege to welcome to the podium these individuals in this specific order. These are individuals that I am very fond of. These are individuals that have been a part of supporting the Poughkeepsie City School District in various ways. These are individuals that are not coming through while they are politicians to some extent. These are individuals who genuinely respect and support the Poughkeepsie City School District, and respect and support the staff, and our students, and really look to work with us. And so in this order, we're going to have a welcome by our mayor, Mayor Rob Rollison, and then we're going to have words from our county executive, County Executive Marcus Molinaro, and then we're going to have words by our state senator, Sue Serino, in that order. All right, mayor. Now, this mayor is in our schools probably more than some parents, and I say that really. I mean, he's there, he's reading to them. By the show of hands, principals that are here, how many of you have had Mayor Rollison at your school? Principals.
Wow.
Principals, please stand up if he's been at your school. This mayor has been at your... Please stand up. And that's every single level. Now, that's something to talk about.
Well, you've got to read, right? You can't do a lot if you don't read first. What a great late afternoon, early evening here at this high school, in this Poughkeepsie City School District, which we all love. The excitement, it's super. And it's okay that it's hot, because this is a really hot situation we've got going on here, Dr. Watson. And thank you for those kind words. And I want to acknowledge two of my close colleagues from the city council here, Chairwoman Ann Finney, and Councilperson Yvonne Flowers from the Fifth Ward. You know, I get a chance to welcome lots of people to the City of Poughkeepsie, organizations and groups, but I can't tell you how important this welcome is. And to Eric and Tara, we have been waiting for you. I want to commend the school board, the search team, the individuals from the community who early on came together to talk about what they thought a new school superintendent should look like, what their background is, where they're coming from, what they've done. And I have to, again, commend the search firm and the school board, because you have picked someone that on that first day, when we were over in the administration offices and writing down on big white pieces of paper what we thought a school superintendent should be for our city school district, well, that person has arrived.
Yes.
And one of the things that we have spent an awful lot of time on, Eric, is the collaboration between city government and the Poughkeepsie City School District. And I can tell you, I know that in the coming days and months, you will be building your team. But I want to let you know that you already have 354 city employees on that team, ready to go. And that count is as accurate as of this afternoon. So in a week, it could be 355, 356, but that's where we are, and that's how we feel about our relationship with this school district, its students, its staff. As the school district goes, city government goes, and as city government goes, the school district goes. And we're all there with one purpose, and that is to make sure that every student in the City of Poughkeepsie that comes to this great school district can get the best education and succeed in life that they want to, and we're there to help. Challenges, yes, but without challenges doesn't come accomplishments, and this school district has been accomplishing so much. And now they've accomplished getting a top first-class school superintendent that we're glad to be partnered with. So congratulations and welcome to the City of Poughkeepsie.
I'm glad to be about a foot and a half shorter than Dr. Rosser. I was able to get under the balloons without any trouble. Good luck getting off the stage. First, to Dr. Watson and the board, and really the staff here at this school district. First, you should know that I have not attended a school board meeting of any kind since graduating from Red Hook High School as a member of the building-level team in 1993. And there is very little that you could possibly convince me to get to a school board meeting for, except I would not want to be anywhere else today than right here, and I mean that sincerely. As the mayor said, and I think you recognize, what I want to offer is Duchess County absolutely believes that the success of our community hinges on the success of the City of Poughkeepsie, and the success of the City of Poughkeepsie hinges on the success of this district, and the success of this district hinges on the success of your students. And your students have all the capacity and the possibility to achieve great success. They need to be believed in, they need to be supported, as they all are, and they need a community that embraces them and helps them along their path towards success. So, Dr. Rosser, you are in the right place at the right time, and to the mayor's point, I offer, we are all on your team together. We want you to succeed, we want this district to succeed, and we want the students here to know that they have the opportunity to be great citizens, and that that starts here in this district.
Yes.
So your leadership, your investment, your partnership is going to be critical, and on behalf of the 1,700 people who work for Duchess County Government... It's not the size of your employee base that matters, mayor, it's the heart. But all 1,700 Duchess County employees are dedicated to ensuring this district and its students see success. You will need to confront the perceptions.
That's right.
Celebrate the successes, and work to bring together a community that is in desperate desire to work together toward ensuring the very best for these students, and you have Duchess County as one of your partners. Congratulations, God bless, and welcome to Duchess.
Well, it's such a great night, and I'm so happy to be here. Felicia, thank you, the board for inviting me. Dr. Rosser, really looking forward to working with you. And, you know, we've got the phone calls to ask what we were looking for, what kind of qualities would we be looking for in a superintendent? And some of them were patience, a unifier, an excellent listener, and somebody that's curious. You know, we have remarkable kids here. We have wonderful teachers, principals, and it just takes somebody to bring it all together. Our school board's done an amazing job, like our county executive said. We need somebody who believes in our kids. And you'll find, like, our chamber, we have a wonderful chamber. I don't know if Frank Castella is here, but they have the workforce development in the school. They're doing an amazing job with our children. So I really look forward to working with you. Whatever you need, I'd love to meet with you, and I just thank everybody for being here tonight. I think it's great. So, thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask our legal counsel to please stand up. Kate Reed. This is our legal counsel, one of the brightest, smartest minds in Mother America, who supports us, has got us through some tough times, and she's here, and she stands with us 100%. So let's give Kate Reed a hand. And then we have our district superintendent, Dr. Hulley. And if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Hulley, from here, I can't tell 100%... Is that a blue suit? There you go. I don't know if you noticed, honey, we're blue and white all the way, and even folks that didn't get the memo are representing. So, Dr. Hulley, thank you so very much. This is our district superintendent. He's the superintendent of the Duchess County Bocees, and he's very supportive. He's heard a lot, he's seen a lot, he understands. One of the things that I respect and admire about him is he keeps it neutral. He doesn't... He operates with efficacy and minds his business. If he's called upon, he says whatever, however, he keeps it neutral. He knows that people come and go, right, Dr. Hulley? And he's learned that, so I respect him. The other day, I was on the street that he lives on, and I saw this individual cutting bushes and doing his thing, and I pulled over, I was blowing my horn and acting unsightly. And, yeah, he was just a wholesome individual. I would also like to acknowledge... Is Chef Dunn still here? Yes, please stand up. We already know. Wonderful. So, if anybody wants some water? So let me just tell you this. So I grabbed some waters from my car that are room temperature, you know, for the stage. And then I came up here and I saw this bin with cold, wonderful water here. And I said, I was beckoning for messages, "Chef Dunn." I said, "Anyone see Chef Dunn?" I said, "You had to have done this." This man, I mean, he's forward-thinking, a part of the solution, and that's what we're really pushing for. Not that we haven't embodied that, but we're taking that to another level, being a part of the solution. So kudos to you for being forward-thinking, kudos to you for always... You know, they say the beauty is in the details, and this man, he doesn't leave a stone unturned. He's always thinking of the details. So would anyone like some cold water? Are you okay? All right, because, you know, that's how we roll up in here in the Poughkeepsie City School District. We will give you a cold drink of water. Oh, yes. I'm serious. Anybody want some water? I'm going to acknowledge all the wonderful people that are on the stage. These are the people that are making it happen from a daily operations perspective, every day, all day. We have our NTM superintendent, Ms. Shere Rubenowitz. Let's give her a hand. We have the dapper, looking like Mr. GQ, Steve Schloica, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I'm always busting on Steve about his suit. I'm like, "Steve, you work for our district because them suits that you wear, they are over the top." And then we have our Assistant Superintendent of People Personnel Services, Charlotte Manona. And just a little bit about her, so Charlotte came to us from a district where in the high school, there's over 5,000 students, and she counted in our robbery to come and share her talents. And I... Let's see, maybe her... Maybe third or fourth week on the job, she was under fire. I was on the phone, 4th of July, we were on the phone all day, de-escalating and dealing with situations, and I really felt bad, but we had to get some things done, and she's relatively new, and yet she did not complain, and I apologized profusely to say, "I'm really sorry." It's the 4th of July, I get it, Independence Day. But, you know, she was on that phone, and we got it done by about 7:00 or 8:00 that night, starting at, like, about 7:15 that morning, more or less, and by then, we had gotten it done. So thank you so much, Charlotte, and thank you for being a great team player. And then we have Mr. Hodge, yes, Assistant Superintendent of everything. Assistant Superintendent of School Safety, the Athletic Director, he came in as the Athletic Director, he was promoted to the Assistant Superintendent. Under his leadership, he brought in the gentleman, Coach Mafia, who took us to the state championship, who put us on the map in a big way, at even the national level. And let me just say this, even the Commissioner, Commissioner Ilya, and we know that she stepped down recently, if you didn't know, you're learning that now, she stepped down, but let me tell you, and I was just at State Ed, the State Education Department yesterday, and they're still talking about our young people, the state champions, and they're also talking about our girls who have the GPA of 95 and above on the crew team. And that was talked about. So Poughkeepsie's on the map, that, yesterday, amidst all kinds of stuff that's going on, and yet, you know, when I ran into her, that came out. So thank you, Coach Hodge, for ushering in that whole process, because without that, I'm not so sure if we would've got Dr. Rosser. Dr. Rosser, you came because we won the state championship? Oh, my bad, my bad. And then we have Dr. Tindike, Elizabeth Tindike. And let me just say, so she's been around for a while, and when I first became a board member, she and I were dealing with a variety of things from a data analysis perspective, because we know that data are king, and data drives processes. And Dr. Tindike and I would delve into those pieces, she was feeding me information from a data-driven perspective, and so we want to say kudos to her, and thank you so much, Dr. Tindike, for all of your fine work with the data analysis and those processes. And then we have one of my favorite people in the whole wide world. I love this man, I think he's all that and a big bag of chips. The Honorable... Now, let me ask you this, because I'm not sure, our board clerk on the end is Becky Torres, so please stand up, Becky, just stand up. There's no way that this board could function and operate without this woman. She is everything, and everything is her. Now, back to the Honorable Tom O'Neill. Tom, is it true that if you're a judge, you're always... Like, that title stays with you?
That's what they tell me.
Okay, good. Because she was right. So I said, "I don't know, honey," and I'm not trying to, you know, cause no havoc, we're trying to move forward, the healing is... We're in the throes of healing, and we're just trying to get it done. So the Honorable Judge Tom O'Neill, and he will be giving the oath of office to our new superintendent, Dr. Rosser, and his beautiful wife, Tara Rosser. Let's give them a hand. We're going to bring them up in a minute. Dr. Ross and Tara. So, as I said, the Honorable Tom O'Neill is going to be coming to the microphone, and he is going to have some words of expression, because one of the things, he came here to speak during the Martin Luther King Program, and you know how high schoolers are, and they were extremely receptive to him, and were clapping with him and giving him, like, the hands in the air, and he was sharing with them an empowerment speech. And I'll be honest, I was shocked. I couldn't believe it, and I'm like, okay, I'm going to be politically correct, because I'm not going to say about age and stuff, but I was like, wow, his ability to connect with these young people and to give them what they need the way they need it was very impressive. So let's hear it for our Honorable Judge Tom O'Neill as he comes to the podium. He's going to have words, and then we're going to go right into our oath, which will be taken here, so I'm going to move this arrangement to the side and the water, and we're going to get ready for our oath. And you're going to take over and do what you do, and you do it so well. Thank you so much.
Madam Board President, thank you. Honored guests, Mayor Rollison, County Executive Molinaro, State Senator Serino, honorable board members, guests here this evening, and our new superintendent. It's an honor to stand here this evening, and in a few moments, have the honor and the privilege of delivering the oath of office to our new school superintendent. I'm not going to give a speech here this evening. I'm not running for anything, except my life at home once in a while. But let me just say this. Dr. Rosser comes to us with all of the requisite skills, talents, experience. He has everything that this school, this district, this community, and this county needs to be a great leader. He comes to us in this city at a time when we don't need just a superintendent, we need a hero. We need someone who will stand on the tracks and do the right thing each and every day. We need a man who will take the time and have the patience to view everything around him, to listen to the good people who are employed here, and to start making decisions about how to raise this district out of the unfortunate abyss that it has fallen into over the past many years. This board has started that process of raising us out of that abyss. Doctor, we will all do anything and everything in our power to help you in your endeavor. So we need you, doctor, to stand on the tracks.
Yes.
We need you to stand on those tracks, look people in the eye, tell them what needs to be done, and do it.
Go ahead, Tara.
Do it effectively, do it with dignity, do it with honor, but we need change.
Yes.
The status quo is not good enough for anybody in this room, it's not good enough for our children, and it needs to be changed. And doctor, it's now my privilege to swear you in so that you can begin that path of change that this community so desperately needs.
Our color guards are standing, our color guards are standing in support of this appointment.
Doctor, please repeat after me. Aye, Dr. Eric Rosser.
Aye, Dr. Eric Rosser.
Do promise, under oath?
Do promise, under oath.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of New York?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of New York?
And the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I will perform my duties?
And I will perform my duties?
As superintendent of the City of Poughkeepsie School District?
Superintendent of this Poughkeepsie City School District.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
Oh, we can do... I almost sound like somebody. Let's give him another applause. We're going to hear from Dr. Rosser, and we're going to hear from his wife, Tara, in just a minute. I'm going to ask all teachers to please stand, all teachers. Anyone that's a teacher in the Poughkeepsie City School District. That's right. Let's make some noise for our teachers. Thank each and every one of you for all that you do. You positively impact the lives of our most precious assets, our students. Thank you all so very much. All support staff, and I don't want to go down the line, because I don't want to miss anything, anyone that operates in a support staff mode, whether it's secretario, custodial, cafeteria, whatever, school nurse, school social worker, school psychologist, and any support staff that helps our babies, please stand up. Security, these are the individuals that make it happen every day. And so Kingsley, would you please stand up? So you know when you're having visitors to your home, and if everything is not just 100% spot-on, and you're, you know, you're mincing things and cleaning things up and stash cleaning? Well, Kingsley, this morning, when I came over about 8 o'clock, because we were trying to set up and get things so that it... To show folks what we're made of here at the Poughkeepsie City School District, he was outside painting and getting things done, and then he has an individual, Ty. Ty, please stand up. Ty just recently got out of the hospital, and he was calling me to make sure things were properly done and prepared, and giving me marching orders with what needed to be done and what had to be done. So Ty, and Kingsley, and your team, not just you two, John Willoughby, is John here? He was on vacation, I felt so bad for him too, and the NTM superintendent was calling him, and just getting things together, not about showboating, but about a change, turning things over, this becoming our norm, having things done. So thank you both so very much. The Board of Education of the Poughkeepsie City School District voted unanimously to appoint Dr. Eric J. Rosser of Buffalo, New York, as the new superintendent of the Poughkeepsie City School District at a special board meeting on Monday, July 15th, 2019, at 5:00 City School District at a special board meeting on Monday, July 15, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. Dr. Rosser, now he's not official yet and you'll hear that. Dr. Rosser currently serves as the Associate Superintendent for Student Support Services of the Buffalo Public Schools, a position he has held since 2015. Dr. Rosser will begin his transition immediately and will officially assume leadership of the district on August 5, 2019. The Board believes that Dr. Rosser will foster a new era of healing and inclusion that has been desperately needed in the Poughkeepsie City School District. His systematic approach to public education, coupled with his diverse breadth of experience, will serve him well and drive in district-wide educational reform that our students and teachers need and deserve. Dr. Rosser's innovative thinking and commitment to classroom rigor reflects his belief that education is every child's civil right. Like a phoenix from the ashes, this district will rise. This district will rise. We believe that it is under his leadership that this will occur. Now, we know that no person is an island unto him and herself, so he cannot do this alone. I like what my board colleague said, Dr. Reiser, said he is not the Messiah, and of course, there's no comparison because that's a whole other level. But I think his statement, when he said that, he was taking it to the top saying that the only way we're going to get this done is to do it cohesively and comprehensively and working together. How many of you agree with that? How many of you really believe that? If you believe it, I need you to say this with me. We're in this?
We're in this.
Together.
Together.
Now I need you to say it like you mean it and blow the rooftop off. We're in this?
We're in this.
Together.
Together.
Dr. Rosser began his career in education as a teacher in the Buffalo Public Schools from 1994 to 1999. Prior to his current position at Buffalo Public Schools, Dr. Rosser served for five years as Director of Student Support Services and Compliance, and for three years as Supervisor of Pupil Personnel Services. He oversaw the implementation of various reform initiatives in the Buffalo Public Schools, including the co-development of the district's Student Success Plan, the Strategic Plan for Improving Student Outcomes, and other strategic initiatives of the district's comprehensive reform model. In 2007, he relocated from Buffalo to Atlanta, Georgia, where he met his beautiful wife. That's not in here. To oversee the Atlanta Public Schools' signature reform initiatives as a program administrator. Dr. Rosser also served as Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Operations and Interim Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Rosser was responsible for the district's signature reform initiative designed to increase the academic outcomes of over 13,000 K-12 students in the school system's lowest-performing schools. He also served as Deputy Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Office of the State Superintendent of Education in Washington, D.C. Dr. Rosser oversaw the implementation of the District of Columbia's State Accountability School District Turnaround Model. He also led the establishment of the accountability system for early learning facilities and programs throughout the District of Columbia. And something that's not in here, and I don't know, I don't remember the specifics of it, but Dr. Rosser also served as Vice President over the Boys and Girls Club in Washington, D.C. and Baltimore. The connection where the rubber week meets the road is our students. The Poughkeepsie City School District Board of Education selected Dr. Rosser because of his thorough understanding of all facets of school district operations, his demonstrated success in advocating for students and families, and his ability to develop collaborative relationships with school leaders and staff. His affability, unwavering integrity, and commitment to education reform makes him the absolute right fit for this district. Dr. Rosser's experience with school turnaround efforts, instructional and student support background, understanding of the role of culture in education, and experience in developing partnerships with community stakeholders, including parents, local and state government, faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, and the philanthropic community, uniquely qualifies him to serve as Poughkeepsie's Superintendent. The hiring of Dr. Rosser follows an extensive search led by consultants, Dr. Thomas Raming and Dr. Teresa Lawrence, both of which are former superintendents. It began on March 12, 2019. The process included eight focus groups held on April 1st and 2nd, 2019, an online survey in English and in Spanish that garnered input from community leaders, business owners, legislators, advocates, unions, district staff, families, and students. The feedback provided a comprehensive profile for the new superintendent. Employment terms for Dr. Rosser include a three-year contract with a base salary of $205,000, which is comparable to superintendent salaries in this region. This is a competitive contract that reflects his extensive experience and the duties and responsibilities of the position. Dr. Rosser has a big job to do, make no mistake. He has a big job to do in moving this district forward. The expectations are very high. A phase of organizational healing followed by the establishment of new systems and procedures is what this district needs to get back on track. Accountability. 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 Will be a huge factor in establishing this platform and the board, all four of these individuals, the big, you say, Mr. Mayor, that the buzz is back? Accountability is back. Dr. Rosser is married, the beautiful Tara. The beautiful Tara. Women, we better stand with her because he is because she is. And she was sharing with us, she had just got her house in Buffalo just the way she wanted. The woman cave, not the man cave, was just completed, and now they're down here looking for a new house. We better stand, Tara, I stand with you. Trustee Clifford stands with you. Trustee Long stands with you, and Trustee Martinez-Leffert stands with you, and Trustee Reiser. Stands with you. Dr. Rosser is married and has two grown children, originally from Cincinnati, Ohio. Dr. Rosser has resided in New York State for more than 20 years, so he understands all of the educational reform, all things New York State. He looks forward to relocating to the city of Poughkeepsie and plans to be very active in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, teachers, administrators, staff, I'm going to ask you to please stand to your feet, not because you have to, because humility is a big factor, but because this is how we do it, pioneer style in the Poughkeepsie City School District, as we salute and as we honor individuals and as we let this man know that we stand with him. Everyone, we're in this?
Together.
We're in this?
Together.
We're in this?
Together.
Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Eric J. Rosser, and he's going to be followed by the lovely Tara Rosser.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is an honor. I'm really at a loss of words because I would have never expected in my wildest dreams to be standing before you today in the type of way that we're standing. Poughkeepsie City School District has gone all out to make my wife and I feel very at home. I want to thank the board members, our Poughkeepsie City School staff, our parents, our students, thank you very much, our elected officials, and community stakeholders at large for welcoming my wife and I as being the newest pioneers in the Poughkeepsie City School District. There's a new chapter, not only in the lives of my wife and I, but there's a new chapter here in the Poughkeepsie City School District. More importantly, there is a new chapter that will be created for the students here in this fabulous school district. And while there are great things happening in the Poughkeepsie School District, there's also a lot of work that needs to take place. However, I have always been a student of understanding that where there is challenge, there is great opportunity. And let me repeat that because this is going to be important for all of us to really embrace as we walk down the path of turning around the Poughkeepsie School District. Where there is challenge, there is great opportunity. And we as adults have the obligation to meet the needs of our children so that they can have what we have when we were in school, and even better. In addition to that, it is our responsibility and obligation to make sure that we are charting a path for them to gain success, not only in school, but also beyond school, in a career of their choice or a post-secondary institution of their choice. I am confident that together we can do it. Once again, I am confident that together we can do it. Let's write the story of we with our children in mind. Let me repeat that. Let's write the story of we with our children in mind so that this time next year, when we're celebrating the wonderful achievements that we've accomplished, over the next year, we can all stand up and say, we did this on behalf of our children. So once again, I thank each and every one of you as individuals. I thank the community as a whole for all the work that we're going to engage in to make sure, or let me rephrase that, to guarantee that our children in the Poughkeepsie City School District have better opportunities and access to greatness as well as success. On this note, I would like to introduce the Superintendent of the Rosser Household, who's going to provide a few words on behalf of our family.
Hi. Good evening. I'm really humbled by the warm welcome that I've gotten from all of you and from the board. I've been made to feel so at home. If you can't tell from the accent, I'm really far from home, but I'm really excited to join this community. I have been an educator for 18 years, special educator, and and I have dedicated my life to ensuring that all students receive an education of the highest quality. And I am so honored and proud to be able to support my husband in making sure that we ensure those same things for this community. Thank you.
So once again, there are great things happening in the Poughkeepsie City School District. We have great children here. We have great adults. We have a great community. It's going to be our obligation, and I use the word obligation purposely because we've been blessed in many instances in the positions and the roles that we play throughout the community, to make sure that all of our children are provided with the leadership necessary to make sure that they maximize their full potential. So once again, thank you very much for the warm welcome, and I look forward to working with each of you individually, as well as each of you collectively, and the great work that we will do on behalf of these children. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Rosser, and thank you to Tara. Let me just share something with Tara. So listen up, and we want the Miss Poughkeepsie Journal to hear. Let's hear for the Poughkeepsie Journal. Tara is a two-time named Teacher of the Year. And as if that wasn't enough, I was just in Washington, D.C. at the U.S. Department of Education on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of last week, doing some things with Nassau, but there's a whole rollout that's going to be taking place, and so I was down there with the U.S. Department of Education. And then that Friday, when I finally met Tara, and she said, we were talking, I don't know, I said something about Nassau just in passing, and she said, and so humble, she says she's, I'm a Nassau educator. That's another level. That's another accolade, and if you don't know, you can Google it and find out exactly what that means, but that's it. So two-time Teacher of the Year and a Nassau educator, another level. But unfortunately, even if the superintendent would recommend it, she will not be working for the Poughkeepsie City School District. However, if, and Dr. Hooly, any, we have Spackenkill, we have Arlington, we have Wapingers. How wonderful would that be that our superintendent's wife is working at a school district nearby? That would be wonderful, correct? Seeding into the lives of kids because for us, it's not just about our babies, it's about all the young people. It's about young people all over the world. At this time, I'm going to ask all of the board members to please stand. I just want to give, these are the individuals that made this happen, working tirelessly, and I don't mean during the search process and during the interview process. These are public servants. They don't get compensated for what they do, not one red penny, no fringe benefits, no behind-the-scenes hookups, none of that. And yet they tirelessly work. They give of themselves day in and day out, and they make great things happen from a policy and governance perspective on behalf of this great district. Let's give them a hand. Thank you. Trustee Martinez-Leffert, Trustee Rick Reiser, Trustee Long, who is also Vice President, and Trustee Clifford, who is a former Vice President who served two years. Thank you all for all that you do. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our interim superintendent, Shrova Benowitz.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Good evening. I want to first again welcome Dr. Rosser and his wife Tara. We're very excited, and this past week, Dr. Rosser came into the district, and we like to refer to it as his road tour, sorry. We like to refer to it as his road tour. He took the time, he went out to the buildings, he spoke to our staff, he met with them. We really appreciate it and we thank you. We're very excited about, and you can clap, absolutely. I've been here a year and I'm also very excited. I've been here a year and I'm also very excited. And at this moment, I also want to thank the board for allowing me to serve in this role the last couple of weeks. I also like to take the time to thank our administrators, our teachers, our support staff for all the work that's been going on this summer. I know a lot of work is done for summer school and also preparing for the fall. We appreciate that. I'd like to thank our assistant superintendents because as we all know, our students come first and work doesn't happen just once, once in a while, it happens all the time. So we really appreciate that. I also would like to thank all the other departments, technology, facilities, food services. Thank you. And I might not be naming all the departments, but just know, we thank you for everything you do. We really appreciate it. Lastly, before I turn it over, I'd like to take the time to ask Mr. Schloica, who's going to provide an update of what's been going on in the buildings around facilities. So thank you very much in advance and I appreciate it. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. And again, I would like to also welcome Dr. Rossner to the district. Thank you very much for being here.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's a pleasure. And I'll give a very brief update of your buildings because I know where we're headed after this and we're running just a few minutes late, so I will be very quick, I promise. I want to let the community know that our administration building, the bowling building by the way, we've now gone through all of our legal channels and I apologize to those of you who may live in the district very close to that building because you know how trying it has been with the contractors that we've been dealing with, trying to put a roof on that building. It was now, instead of two weeks, put us well over two and three and four months now. But we've now gone through all of our legal channels and that building will now, hopefully, starting next week, you will see the site be cleaned up, you will see the roof be covered up, and the building now, the district will be able to decide how to move forward with that district. But the unsightlyness of the site will be cleaned up, we promise, and thank you very much. I'd like to just briefly say with the other buildings, the cleaning is on track. We're doing actually very well. And I would also like to thank all of the staff this summer, especially our buildings and grounds and our custodial staff for working so hard this summer to make sure our buildings are in shape and ready for school to start. I will get out of your way.
One second, one second, Mr. Schloica. I know that there were some questions regarding the, at Central, and we know that there was a roof issue and the roof came in, and I know that there were some debris, and I know that a couple different times, we've talked about that, we've talked about it on the floor, you know about it. So where do we stand with that? Because the residents that live in that vicinity, we want to make sure that we respect them and that, you know, things are not looking unseemly for them. So can you please let us know where we stand with that?
Absolutely, glad to give you an update. Our legal counsel has given us, has given us the permission now to go out and get a contractor now and hire a contractor to clean up the site. We're hoping to get those costs into us by Friday and hopefully have a contractor on site as early as Monday or Tuesday next week to start cleaning up the site.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
At this time, we're going to open the floor for citizens' comments. We know the process, three minutes, state your name and your address, and feel free to come to the microphone. This board takes very seriously your thoughts and concerns.
Thank you. The two Hines, 14 Hudson Heights Drive in Poughkeepsie. I'm from Cornell Court Perdive Extension, is the Eat Smart New York program, and I'm the facilitator of the Wellness Committee here at the City School District. On behalf of the Wellness Committee, I would like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Rossner, to the school district. The Wellness Committee has been operating in the school district for several years, and in those years, a small group of very dedicated parents, teachers, administrators have been working to pass the policy so that we're in compliance with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. That group has also worked very hard to make sure that wellness and health is around the district. Some of the projects we've worked on are the Backpack Program. We've worked on the Smarter Lunch Movement to feed our kids healthier foods, and we've worked on water access, school gardens, all kinds of things in partnership with different organizations. As the Wellness Committee, our goal is to support the district as it creates a culture of health and wellness that is essential for the success of the students and the staff. Wellness, health is a foundation. Ask anybody who's ever been seriously ill. And so we need to build that foundation, we need that foundation to be strong. And in order for that to happen, we need your input, everyone here, parents, administrations, board, and of course you, Dr. Rossner. So we invite you to join us so that we can work together for the benefit of everyone, but most importantly, for the benefits of the young lives entrusted to the school district. Our meetings are on the second Thursday of the month at 3:15 in the middle school library. And so for the upcoming school year, it is going to be on September 12th. So we hope to see you there. We'd love more of you to come and join us in that effort. And like you said, Dr. Watson, we're in this together.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cornelia Harris. I live at 40 South Randolph. I'm a parent of an incoming Krieger student, and this past year, I was the president of the ELC PTA. So I wanted to, I wanted to say that on July 1st, the district accepted the second donation of $3,000 from the PTA for our ELC library. So, thank you. So we've been working really hard to make sure that our kids have a library that is welcoming and fully staffed with books that they can read and that are age-appropriate. We're continuing to work on that, we have a way to go. What I'd like to have from the district at this point is some time for the librarian this summer to open the boxes, process the books, and catalog them so that they're on the shelves and ready to go. I've talked about this with previous acting superintendents, and I hope that that's something we can authorize at this point so that in September, we have a library that the kids can use. The water. I just want to say that I was heartbroken that the journal chose to print that headline on Sunday. If people didn't read the article all the way through, please do. The headline did not tell the entire story. Our district has lead in different fixtures. Three of those fixtures are fountains. We have had these data for three years. And when water fountains are broken, as many of them are throughout the district, the kids go to other fixtures, including sinks, or they go without water. And this last article, parents are confused, staff are confused, people have been texting and calling me, asking me, "Well, is there lead or isn't there lead?" We need to share those data with everybody in our district so that everybody knows what's going on. I remain thrilled that we have the bullet aid funding from Assemblyman Jacobson. I look forward to seeing the water fountains, which will have bottle fillers and lead filters on them, installed quickly. It would be wonderful to have this done now so that our kids have access to clean water that is safe and cold, as you mentioned, Dr. Watson, when the school year starts. I also request that the district recommit to the Wellness Committee by making sure that all buildings send representatives to the meetings, along with an administrator. And this hasn't happened routinely in the last two years since I've been attending the meetings, and it would really help to make sure that we're solving problems in a timely and positive manner. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Rabinowitz, would you like to respond to that? Or Mr. Schloica, I know that John Willoughby is not here, unfortunately. He's our Director of Facilities and Operations. And one of the things that I'm really fastidious about is facts. As I said earlier, data are king, and truth and facts matter. And I know Mr. Willoughby, who is the Director of Facilities and Operations, oversees all things Poughkeepsie City School District that deals with operations. And Steve Schloica, Mr. Schloica is the Assistant Superintendent that oversees that specific department. So I know that there's been discussions. Here's the bottom line when it comes to the Poughkeepsie City School District, and Dr. Rossner has been briefed on this, and Ms. Cheryl Rabinowitz have been on this, we will issue a complete statement. The data has been released in the past, however, we will reissue the information because we cannot operate in either fallacy or hype or rumors. We operate in facts. And so it's important, and so Ms. Rabinowitz is very much aware of it. We've had real concerted conversations regarding this to get to the bottom of it and to make sure. And once the information is released, here's what I'm going to ask you to do. Once you read it and it is released and it's there, then trust it and believe it. Because then we can't keep building on something that if it's put out there and the information is shown to be whatever it is, then we need to trust that it's accurate and it's real. Is that okay? Is everyone in agreement with that? Is anyone opposed to that? No, good, excellent. Ms. Rabinowitz or Mr. Schloica, I don't know if you want to share anything else specific to that?
I would like to share that in John's notes, he did say in the middle school...
Can you use the microphone, please, sir?
Yes, can I, can you hear me now? John did leave in his notes that we are starting to replace the water fountains in the middle school with the ones that are non-functional first and then the rest of the fountains.
Excellent, thank you. I want to commend the Wellness, Cornelia Harris, where is she, she's sitting? And all the individuals, all individuals that are part of the Wellness Committee, please stand. And so these individuals are embodying, it takes a village. And I know that specifically, I know Cornelia Harris, she was about to go on vacation and she came over to participate in some of the press pieces to make sure that, you know, information is put out there. So we just want to commend you. The Wellness Committee is not a PTA committee, just so we're all aware of that. It is not a PTA committee. PTA members, and I know that trustee Clifford has been very active on the Wellness Committee over the years, not just the past two years, but many, many years. And so we will continue to build and we want to make sure that, I don't know all of the nuances of this, as Ms. Harris has stated, as far as the alliance of building level administration and district level administration, I'm not sure. But whatever the regulatory information that needs to take place, we can say this, and I'm sure Dr. Rossner will agree, that moving forward, we will ensure that we begin to focus on that and to make sure that that happens because we are in this together. Thank you. And so we turn it over to our president of our teachers' union, Ms. Heather Martino.
Yes, Heather Martino, PIPSA president, Poughkeepsie High School teacher, Poughkeepsie High School parent, and resident of the city of Poughkeepsie. Dr. Rossner, we welcome you. We are thirsty for your positive leadership. We look forward to fostering a positive collaborative relationship immediately. We want what is best for everyone in this community. And I can say that as a teacher, I can say that as a resident, and I say that as a parent. Thank you.
I'm Joe Mizetti, I'm the principal of Pace Academy. I'm also co-president of PIPSA, the administrators' unit, with Nadine Dargan. I'm also the Region Four representative for SANEES, the Administrator State Union, and Region Four is this region. On behalf of all those organizations and all the things I belong to, I'd like to welcome Dr. Rossner and his wife Tara to the PMH family. We look forward to your leadership, we look forward to working with you. You have a dedicated group of administrators, teachers, support staff, and most exceptionally wonderful children. We look forward to rolling our sleeves up, working hard on that road of change to meet the needs of every child in the Poughkeepsie City School District. Welcome.
Are there any other citizens' comments?
Hello, my name is Tron, 13 Morgan Avenue, Poughkeepsie, New York. The Black and Latino Coalition. First of all, I came up here to apologize to the old leadership of the school board that would include Ralph and Greg and Randy, because I said things, not that they wasn't true, but I didn't say them out of love, and there wasn't love in my heart when I spoke that. So I'm sorry for that. The thing I have here is that I'm glad that somebody knew I don't know you, I haven't researched you. I am impressed with your wife because she seemed to be humble, and I believe that we should be humble. When we were up there, when she said she was humble, I felt it. The thing is that our middle school, if you have your hands, if they have their fingers on the pulse of the community, the middle school, you can ask any parent, the middle school is out of control. We had a person there who actually got it out of receivership, and he's no longer there. And I'm sorry I didn't speak up earlier because I really believe that he's there and he has the heart of the children. He believes what he does. He goes to court, he does different things that no president, I mean, no principal at any school did. And I'm sorry that they got rid of him when he was the one that helped get it out of receivership. So I'm also up here because I've been working on the Mighty Young Text at Moore School. And so I didn't want people to think that I'm a respected person, and I didn't speak because of that. I spoke because I'm trying to get them out of, to move them forward. And I did see the new superintendent at Moore School, and he, we had three classes in that area, and two of them was the Mighty Young Text. And he went into the room that was empty, and I was wondering why he didn't go to the one with the students in it so he could introduce himself. And I'm inviting you to come to see the Mighty Young Text, the owner's...
30 seconds, Mr. Melton.
The STEAM program, like no other STEAM program in this district. Look it up on Google, Mighty Young Text. And we do this without any funding. We don't get funding. But we do this because we love them and we have God in our heart. And I say this with love to everybody up there because I love the children, I love the community, and I love the people on the board. I have no problem. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. There's an individual I want to stand. Is that it for citizens' comments?
Hi, my name's Nicole Fennishell Hewitt. I'm the executive director at The Art Effect, which is on Pershing Ave here in Poughkeepsie. I am also, The Art Effect is also part of a large coalition, the youth coalition here in Poughkeepsie. I want to welcome you, Dr. Rossner. I also want to tell you there's a lot of support here in the community. There's a lot of amazing community agencies that work on everything from gardening to sports to academics to the arts, and we are excited to partner with the district more. We're also part of the After School Empire State Grant Program, which is a fabulous program. We get an opportunity to work with students in every single school in the district, and I am excited this year and hopeful that the program will start in September so that the families and the students get, or even October would be great. So they get the benefit of those programs earlier. And again, there's a ton of support, we're so excited, we're full of hope and optimism. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to ask Mario Johnson to please stand up. Mario Johnson, Mario Johnson oversees the Empire Grant, and he was brought in. Let me just say a couple things. So he's a former council member of the Fifth Ward, he's a former county legislator, and he's formerly worked for Duchess Community College. He's done great things. He also worked with Nubian Directions as a grant writer and assistant in doing things with them. And he's just an overall incredible human being. And Mario, we just want to say, Mr. Johnson, I'm half the Board of Education, you've done a stellar job with the after-school movement. And I know that personally because that's some of the work that I do through the State Education Department. So we just want to say kudos to you and thank you for your first year, and you've turned it around, there's great accountability, and we super appreciate you. You're also doing a great job with the summer program, so thank you so very much. Are there any other citizens' comments? I see Ms. Sandow. We're going to close the citizens' comments before Ms. Sandow comes to the microphone. No, I'm teasing. That's my girl. Love her. At this time, we're going to move into our consent agenda, but before we do that, there's one gentleman I see sitting in the audience, Rick Finner, who's a veteran. And not only is he a veteran, but he's a mobilizer, and he's going to help us erect our tribute to our veterans here in the Poughkeepsie City School District. Please stand, Mr. Finner. Yes. He's our veteran. He makes great things happen. Give him the microphone, please. I'm Mr. Danisfar. Thank you.
It's only been 54 years since I sat in one of these seats as a student.
Once a pioneer?
Always a pioneer.
Once a pioneer?
Always a pioneer.
Once a pioneer?
Always a pioneer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Finner. We're going to move to our consent agenda, and we're going to be getting out of here in just a couple of seconds. So hang tight. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Are there any items to be removed?
Nope.
Can you move on one second?
Oh, I see. Then I'll move. Yeah, I won't stay. Okay.
Mr. Reiser, I know that there was an item. Can you tell me the specific agenda item?
It was the-
We need to pull that one in order for you to be able to vote, to be able to abstain from that vote.
I was not on the board yet.
Which agenda item is that, sir?
June 19, June 24th Agenda Minutes. So 7.1 and 7.2.
So 7.1, 7.2. We're going to remove those agenda items, sir, and we'll vote on them separately. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding items 7.1 and 7.2?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.1?
So moved.
And 7.2? We'll do it collectively.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Madam Clerk, now we're going to vote on them separately so that Andrew, Trustee Reiser, who was not a part of that meeting, can vote separately. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Lefford?
Yes.
Dr. Watson? Yes. Motion carries. Did you call Trustee Reiser? Dr. Reiser?
Abstained.
Okay, there it is. Motion still carries. Is there a motion to walk on? There's a couple. I'm going to do them collectively. Resolution number 19-
We have action items.
We have one action item.
We have one action item.
One, two.
Thank you so very much. There's one board action item. Resolution number 20-48. Is there a motion to approve this action item?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion regarding this action item?
Aye.
Yes, there is. All right, hold on. Sorry, we aren't having, sharing a microphone down here. This is regarding the Jane Bolin Building, correct?
Mrs. Rabenowitz or Mr. Schloica? Can you confirm that? It's not, it's action-
Well, I know that it is. So my question, the bottom line is, we're, Mr. Schloica just told us that we are putting, we are looking for someone to come in and clean up the debris and retarp the roof, et cetera, and make the premises of that building not unseemly anymore, which indicates to me that the district is taking on the cost of hiring someone to come in and do that work. And I'm wondering, I realize that we're terminating our contract with this particular construction company. Where is their accountability in the mess that they made? And cleaning it up? And us paying for it?
If I might, what this resolution actually does is it legally separates our liability from the contractor and removes them from being the contractor per the AIA contract that we actually signed with them. And now it allows us to go after them and their insurance company. That's the accountability piece.
From our, from the district's insurance?
Correct.
Insurance or the contractors?
Our insurance company obviously will pay for this, but what it allows our insurance company to do and our legal counsel to do now is to go after the insurance companies of the contractor.
Okay.
And the surety bond. The surety bond folks are going to be writing us a check for the roof, and our insurance company will be taking care of the building itself. And then we will be going after the individual liability coverage of the contractor for the contents of the building.
Okay. So that's how, that's our recourse against the contractors, going after his insurance company?
Correct.
Is there any other way that, I mean, was there anything else done with regard to this contractor and the mess that he made? Or they made?
We've taken all the legal steps that we can possibly take per the contract that was signed with this contractor, I assure you.
Wait, I had one other question. Forgive me because I'm not familiar with, particularly with insurance with regard to the school district. Is that going to negatively, you know, I'm only familiar with homeowner and car insurance. Is that going to affect the district negatively that we're making a claim, an insurance claim to cover those things?
That I can't answer specifically. You never know. You hope not. I would hope not. Obviously, it's not of the fault of the district, and there is insurance involved.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Schloica. Just for the audience's sake, Mr. Schloica oversees facilities and operations, and he has been reporting out to the board some of these things. He has kept us abreast on these issues and actually has been very thorough. So this isn't negate information. The board has been abreast to these. We had an extensive conversation at the onset and even brought in individuals to help us. I forget the individual that came when we were in the side room there that came. Who was that?
I'm sorry. Say again.
The individual that came in to talk to us about the roofing and the different facets of this?
That was actually our architect.
Right. The architect has been in, has met with the board, has spoken with the board, and Mr. Schloica has been giving information to the board specific to this. Are there any further questions from the board? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Lefford?
Yes.
Dr. Reiser?
Yes.
Dr. Watson? Yes. Motion carries. We're going to move to our walk-on items. I'm going to do them collectively for the sake of time. Is there a motion to walk on Resolution Number 19-1029? Resolution Number 19-1667? Resolution Number 20-11? Resolution Number 2051? Board members, make sure I don't miss anything.
2049.
Resolution Number 2049? Resolution Number 2051? Resolution Number 2053?
2050.
Resolution Number 2050? Resolution Number 19-1567? Is there a way that we can pull these up? Because the public cannot see these. These are walk-on. So that the public can see these resolutions? By policy, it is our fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the public is aware of things that we're voting on.
Dr. Watson, can I just make a suggestion? Because the order of the resolution numbers that we're seeing is different than the order you're calling them in, so it's hard for us to follow whether you're calling all of them or not.
I'm going to, Resolution 2055, you don't have the same ones?
Yes. I do, but it seems like some of the numbers are not in the same order as the ones-
No, I'm calling them out of order because if I skip it, then they're calling them out. Resolution Number 2056? Are you with me? Page seven?
Mm-hmm.
Page eight? Resolution Number 2057? Resolution Number 2058? Are we spot on?
Yep.
Resolution Number 2058?
There's two 2058s.
2059? And we're going to have to amend that. Board Clerk? Is there a resolution to walk on all of these agenda items?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a resolution? We're going to, is it projected? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-1029?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we need to amend this. The third line, it says fall interscholastic coaches of the text of the resolution. I don't know who's running the screen. It says fall, and it should be winter. She changed it on there.
It has been amended.
Well, we agreed in the executive session, we would amend it on the floor.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution as is?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-158?
So moved. Second.
Wait a minute.
Any discussion?
Can you read that number again?
Resolution Number 19-1578, page two of the walk-on resolutions.
Second.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Mrs. Clifford?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez-Lefford?
Yes.
Dr. Reiser?
Yes.
Dr. Watson? Yes. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-1667?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-11?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-11?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-51?
What about 20?
2050. How about it?
How about 2049?
How about 2049? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2049?
So moved.
2050 and 2051?
So moved.
Any discussion regarding those resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a resolution, a motion to approve Resolution Number 2052? 2053 and 2054?
We have 2050 and 2051 also.
Okay. We'll go to that. 2052, 2053, 2054.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion regarding Resolution Number 2052, 2053, 2054? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2050, 2051?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion? Do we do 2054?
We already did that.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-1567? On page seven?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion regarding that resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2055, 2056, and 2057, and 2058?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion regarding those resolutions as stated? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to amend Resolution Number 20, it says 58, to make it 2059?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-59?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any other agenda items? Board Clerk? Madam Board Clerk?
No.
Okay, we're going to move then into our comments from our board members. We're going to do it in this order. We're going to start, first of all, with our NTM Superintendent, Ms. Rabenowitz, followed by Trustee Clifford, Trustee Reiser, Trustee Martinez-Lefford, and then our Vice President, Trustee Long, and then we're going to move in that order.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. I just want to reiterate what I said earlier, that I'm very, very excited for the Poughkeepsie City School District. We look forward to working with Dr. Rosser and the team. We're always available, and we can't wait to start. So thank you and welcome, Dr. Rosser, again.
I had something written on my phone, and of course, I left my phone at home. When Deborah and I ran two years ago, one of the things that I kept saying resoundingly was that we were going to flip the ship and shake it out and right the ship. And I really feel like today, swearing you in is the first step, the first major step. We've done some things, but this is the first major step of righting the ship that is the Poughkeepsie City School District. I'm excited. I'm really ecstatic, looking forward to working with you, looking forward to having you lead this district in a way that it deserves to be led, focused on the students, putting their needs and their necessities first. It's a change that we've been waiting for, for a long time. And I welcome you, and Tara, I welcome you, and I can't wait to see what the future holds because all there is here for us is possibility. Thank you.
Tara, as well. I hardly know what to say. I'm excited that my daughter, Sophie, a seven-year-old and starting third grade at Krieger, gets a chance to be a part of the change that we're going to make together under your leadership. And that's a moment of great hope and opportunity for the Reiser family. It's a wonderful moment for the school district, for the community and the city. I'm not going to say much more.
Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I'll just say, to reiterate some comments I made at the meeting, which appointed you, you know, on the one hand, hard work and commitment and dedication without leadership don't get us that far. Leadership without that commitment and dedication, hard work, same. But all those things together, the hard work, commitment, leadership, and hard work and dedication of parents, students, teachers, support staff, the volunteers, the community members, all of us working together with, in concert with your leadership, is going to create some unstoppable change in this district. I'm so excited for the future. Welcome and onward and upward.
So I just want to start with an apology that I wasn't here for the last couple meetings. The first one, I had a sick child, and then the last couple, I was out of the country. So I did, I do apologize for not being available or around. It really, I was on the phone with everybody in our executive session meetings. As difficult it was to not be present, I still had to be there with an ear, knowing
what, everything that's going on. As you know, there's always lots going on in this district, good or bad. Um, so I, being a part of this process has been incredible as a community member, as a parent, uh, as a teacher. When I teach in my class, it's a very isolated situation. This has made, um, my eyes really open up to the process of a school district. And it has been an incredible experience and my pleasure, um, with these, my board, uh, colleagues to choose what we think is and will be the best change for the city of Poughkeepsie School District. I'm proud to be working along all these people and, as we move forward, continue to work hard to make the changes for our children, my children, and the children that will attend the city of Poughkeepsie School District in the future. Thank you.
Um, good, uh, good evening. And I'd like to start, um, Dr. Watson, you forgot two wonderful names, and Dr. Rosser. I'd like to, uh, welcome you and Tara and Boston and Raven. They, she forgot about Boston and Raven.
The, what, the dogs?
The dogs. Yes. Um, I'd like to thank Chief Wagner and the ROTC. So, I'm a big one about accountability. And I'm gonna put it out there because it starts with that flag that has been crooked for the last two months that I've asked to be, uh, uh, fixed and it still has not been. So, we are gonna hold that person responsible for fixing that flag. Um, accountability. I don't have much to say. I'm excited. Um, it has been a long process and I think we have the best pick ever. I look forward to a productive year. Um, we're all in this together and we're gonna turn this school district around. I was only here a few years ago and it was the best. And, um, I'm proud to be a pioneer and a graduate of Poughkeepsie City School District. And our kids deserve this today. So, that's all I have to say. I'm ready for some cake and that's that.
Before we close out, I do want to give our assistant superintendent the opportunity to just go down the line to have, uh, words of expression, please, starting with, um, okay? Uh, Mrs. Shloika said he had words, so start it with, uh, Ms. Manona.
Uh, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Rosser this morning. It was a pleasure. I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening. Um, I genuinely look forward to working with you. And I welcome you to the Poughkeepsie School District. We're both newbies. And, uh, welcome, congratulations. And here's to a fruitful, eventful, moving forward, upcoming school year.
Hello? I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Rosser yesterday. We had a great conversation to, um, I know it's gonna be a great collaboration. He's a great listener, uh, thinker. And, you know, I was probably one of about twenty people that he was having a meeting with, so I know he's on overload right now. Um, I also have to throw in there, I'm from Buffalo. So, let's go Lenovo. Let's go Canisius. So, it's, it's great. I welcome you and your wife here and, um, look forward to working with you.
Welcome, Dr. Rosser. Welcome, Tara. We've had the first of, I assume, many conversations. We are very excited, uh, that you bring seasoned leadership to Poughkeepsie. And we all welcome accountability. Uh, that's gonna be good for all of us. So, welcome. We are at your service. We are delighted to do everything we can to ensure your success, Dr. Rosser, and your comfort, Tara. Thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna just read this, uh, it's by Theodore Roosevelt. He said it is not, I'm going to, um, use editorial liberalism, um, in one of the words, to be neuter, neutral. "It is not the critic who counts. Not the man, not the person who points out how the strong person stubbles, stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the person who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust, sweat, and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, who spends him or herself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he or she fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his or her place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Ladies and gentlemen, as we close out, we're going to have our new superintendent have the final remarks. I present to you, we're going to ask him to grab the mic. And I present to you again, standing up, ovation, six feet eight inches, Mr. Mann, our new superintendent, Mr. Doctor Superintendent Eric J. Rosser. Let's make some noise.
Once again, thank you very much for the warm wel, the warm welcome that you provided my wife and I. As I mentioned earlier, this is beyond my wildest dreams. But I'm privileged, I'm honored to serve as your superintendent of schools. And I look forward to the many days that we work on behalf of the city's school students. I thank each of you for all that you've done thus far. Our goal is going to be to build upon our success, to celebrate our, our successes, and to focus on what's strong rather than focusing purely on what's wrong. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to adjourn out of our regular meeting on today, July twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen? Thank you also very much for coming.